Eighth version of AM Live on EOA, your connection to Eastern Oregon. We're glad you're here with us today on this good Tuesday morning, man.
It's like cold Tuesday morning.
Yeah, it's got that fall feeling to it, doesn't it?
Yeah, definitely. And this year flew by.
Yeah.
Again.
I know.
It's like time just, it's crazy.
Yeah, just it, that, that, that's when you feel old is when you start talking about time and weather.
Yeah, or when you have two Mondays every week.
Yeah.
Monday, second Monday, like this always feels like Monday. I don't know why.
Yeah, well.
It doesn't even matter if, like usually I'm pretty slow on Monday, you know, like, but it doesn't even matter if it's like a super busy Monday. Like if there's a whole bunch of stuff going on, Tuesday still feels like another Monday. I think it's mental.
Is it? I think so too.
Yeah, probably got myself psyched into punishing myself with two Mondays every week.
When you had the tap house, did you have to get up on Mondays?
No, we didn't even open till noon.
Yeah.
So usually I got there about nine thirty-nine.
Yeah.
You know what I mean? Like not, not early, no. But there was a point, I mean, obviously when I went to school, um, when I worked, when I, when I was working for the state, doing behavior support plans for adults with, um, that was, that was a regular old eight o'clock, you know?
Yeah.
I worked eight to five.
Yeah.
But I've never been a fan of mornings.
I'm, I'm surprised, I mean, I don't know that, I mean, you know, maybe a third of the people, maybe less than that are like morning people. They're like, yeah, let's go, you know?
There's all, I mean, so if there's something exciting going on in the morning, like I'm, I'm all for it. Like if I gotta get up to go to a game or like, uh, if going fishing, oh, I'm all.
Really?
Yeah, I love getting up early for that kind of stuff, but for other things, not so much.
See, I, hunting, getting, I mean, you gotta get up, you know, super early. And I always, as a kid, I remember, uh, our whole family would go hunting and they'd load us kids in the car and we'd be sleeping all the time that we were traveling out there and stuff, but it was like, it was so cold and miserable.
I'm not, I, I, I've never been like a huge fan of like going out and like looking for an animal hunting. You know what I mean? Like I don't wanna go tramp around in the woods looking for, I'd much rather just, you know, like put up a call and call in the coyote.
Yeah.
And hang out or, you know, like, um, damage control elk, like just to fill the freezer. But I, I, I don't wanna go out there at like four o'clock in the morning when it's 12 degrees below zero and, and go searching for the elk with eight points, you know what I mean? Like there's no.
Yeah, I'd say that, and the archery hunters that are successful that do that, man, they are super committed. I mean, from head to toe, everything they wear, their scent.
They, they, they invest a lot of money and a lot of time into it too.
Yeah, and it's, and it's, and it is the extreme of going and calling and waiting and, you know, I mean, but it's like, it's like take, it's super patient, takes a lot of patience.
I've, I've never understood, like, I mean, I guess I do kinda understand it, but it's still kinda like, it's weird to me that people like, hunt just for a trophy, some people, like to hang on their wall, like it's kinda weird.
Well, I, I mean, I've shot my share of beautiful bulls or bucks, you know? And that was kind of a happy thing, but I mean, cause, but primarily it was always for the meat, you know? I mean, you are always a little disappointed when, you know, you got a spike or you ended up having to take a cow or whatever it was. But once you did get, you know, once you got something that looked really good and the meat was there, then that was.
Yeah, but usually those ones that look really good don't taste as good because they're older.
Yeah, well, I never.
I want like yearling or two-year-old cow, you know what I mean?
See, I never, I never, it was never a thing of like, oh, I, we're not gonna take that because it's gonna taste bad.
Well, yeah, I mean, I get that, but the, the argument there for me is like, I'm not gonna go out there looking for an eight-year-old bull or buck when there's a two-year-old that tastes better.
Yeah.
You know what I mean? Just so I can hang some horns on my wall.
Yeah, but a spike, you know, they're, they're sometimes worse tasting than a more mature buck.
Really?
Yeah, just cause they're young and vigor and.
See, I think that, I think the young, I've had spike before and it was really good.
Yeah. So.
I don't like deer over here though. The deer over here taste, nah, no bueno.
I don't know that I, I mean, I've harvested deer over here, but I don't know that I've, know the difference in the taste.
You would, if I put like a, if I put a blacktail from the coast in front of you.
Yeah.
A muley from like down in Clamath Falls.
Yeah.
On the, on, on the pivots. And a muley from over here, you, you can put three completely different tastes. Completely, all based on what they're eating.
So in, we used to, you know, hunted antelope in, in Wyoming and it always tasted like sage. You could always, yeah, it just.
What do they call them?
Cause that's what they eat.
Desert or something or the other?
Yeah.
That, and, and that's what mules taste like over here for the most part, very sagey.
Yeah, but we'd take, I mean, most of that, most of the antelope meat we'd take and make in the hamburger, you know?
It's like what I did when I shot my bear.
Yeah.
Most of it was hamburger meat, but a couple of roasts.
Yeah.
And that's, when I went there to Northern Idaho, um, the, the guy who was our guide, he was, he, he raised tick hounds.
Tick hounds?
Tick hounds are the, are the hounds that you use to hunt bear and cougar.
Okay.
They're a type of, of dog. And I'd never had bear by itself that was good. I mean, I had like bear jerky that tastes okay, you know, some sausage that was all right. And his wife made pulled bear sandwiches, so like a roast.
Yeah.
And it was the best bear, so I, I mean, it was so good that I took some of it home with my kid, to, to my kids in Oregon. Yeah, it was fantastic. Yeah, it was really good. My little doohickey fell out of my pocket.
Yeah, your microphone thingy.
It's cause these pants have a little tear.
All right, you and do sports.
Let's do it.
All right.
Morning sports report brought to you by Buffalo Peak Golf Course. Man, Dana and his team, they, they didn't have power, I think, yesterday, so they shut down. They're back at it today. Go out and check out what Dana's got going on out there. He's revamped the pro shop, it looks excellent out there. Eighteen hole length style course, I mean, I think it's still open, yeah, it's still open as long as the weather's cooperating. Buffalo Peak Golf Course, meet me at the peak. Coming, so something really cool happened, uh, this weekend. I got, I'm having a brain fart here, hang on. Wow. Okay, I'm gonna have to wing it, BC.
Okay.
Nice. Um, anyways, Andrew Peasley and the Wyoming Cowboys, they, they beat Nevada on Saturday. Forty-two to six, Peasley had like a hundred and sixty-five yards throwing, two touchdowns. He ran nine times for ninety-six yards and two touchdowns. Now we just really sit, sit back and wait and see where Wyoming's gonna end up bowl wise, cause they're eight and four. They're bowl eligible, they're gonna play in a bowl. And, and that's pretty cool for Peasley's senior year, he's gonna go out, you know, in, in a decent bowl. They should get a decent bowl game too, I mean, not anything huge, but, um, hopefully it's clip on the west coast. So a lot of his, you know, his people can get there and, um, coming off Thanksgiving break, the only active team for EOU is the women's basketball team, they were in Hawaii. They were, they were in Hawaii for eight days for two games on a Friday and Saturday.
Yeah, you were telling me that.
Must be nice to have the athletic director as your coach. No, I mean, it, it has probably more to do with the, they, uh, they probably fundraised, you know what I mean? There's definitely, but they were in Hawaii for eight days, they played in, uh, the, the tournament there in Hawaii. Guard Bailey Brennan was named to the all tournament team, they went one and one while they were over there. The third ranked team in the country, EOU volleyball starts their pool play on Wednesday at eleven versus Valley City. You can go to eousports.com to watch it, I think it's like seven ninety-five a game. Or you can get the whole thing all the way up to the semifinals for thirty bucks, like twenty-nine ninety-five. So they play Valley City on Wednesday and then they turn around and play Montana Tech on Friday at eleven Pacific time. And then whoever has the best record out of those three teams moves on to the bracket play. And so basically you need to win both of those games. You don't want it to be one and one and one, you know, everybody to be one-on-one and rely on a tie. EOU should be fine, I mean, they're, they're, they're much better than the two teams in their, in their pool. If, if EOU makes it to bracket play, it'll be the, I, I wanna say it's the sixth time ever and back-to-back years. EOU made it to the semifinals last year, they lost to Corbin. They haven't lost to Corbin one time this year, they've beat them all three times they've played them. So twice during the regular season and once in the CCC tournament championship. And man, this might be the year, BC, I keep saying it, it'll be the first team national championship ever for EOU. And, and I'm gonna repeat this because you got all these people, oh, well, they had a cross-country scheme in nineteen eighty-two.
I like the way you do this with a different voice.
Well, I mean, it's because it was, it wasn't a sanctioned team.
Right, right, right.
It was a club team and I mean, that just, that's why they say, you know, hey.
Yeah.
No EOU team has ever won a national championship.
Right.
And this team has a real legitimate shot, a real legitimate shot. EOU men's and women's basketball make the long trip down to Clamath Falls, take on OIT on Friday night and then they turn around and go to Ashland to play Southern on Saturday. Men's wrestling is at Evergreen State in Washington on Saturday and then they turn around and wrestle on Sunday at the Clackamas Open. And that's pretty much it for EOU for this week. High school sports kickoff in about a week and a half, they're practicing right now. I know my son had his, uh, black and gold, which is like the inner squad wrestling last night. So that's, that's kinda like the culmination of, of wrestling season for a team. So, I mean, we're, we're looking at some good wrestling for LaGrande again this year. Basketball's gonna be eh, but the wrestling team is gonna be solid as usual. I mean, it's just a, it's pretty much a constant. I'm still working on getting out the fall senior interviews, it's been a long process. I still got some in my, you know, in, in the bank that are gonna come out. So if you're waiting for your senior interview to come out, just be patient, they're coming. That's all I got for you. AM Sports Report brought to you by Buffalo Peak Golf Course, meet me at the peak.
Good stuff.
Yeah. All right, well. See what happened with this paper was, I typed all that information about Peasley.
It's not there?
Yeah, it was the first thing I wanted to, I just type reminders, I don't read it or the word. But I'm like, cause I had like all the yard, yeah, like what happened? But it's all good.
Did you watch that game?
Yeah, I watched like the, the second, like most of the second half.
Man, I wish I, I was gone Saturday anyhow, but that would have been, I would have.
The first, uh, score of the game was Peasley forty-three yard touchdown run.
Wow.
Yeah. Nevada's not very good, but that's not taking anything away from, Peasley had a really good game. He was like twelve of eighteen, he only threw for a hundred and sixty-five yards, but he didn't have to, they scored forty-two points.
Yeah. Well, they've, he's, he's probably had his best college year.
By far.
Yeah.
By, no question.
Yeah.
Eight and four, you know, pretty tough league this year too. I mean, you got Boise State and I think Fresno State playing for the championship in Vegas.
Yeah.
And that's weird because there was three teams that were like eligible and they do it by a computer system.
Okay.
I, they assign points, I don't know how it works exactly, I'm not keen on that kinda stuff. I think it's kinda like the OSAA, it's a bunch of BS.
Yeah.
But, uh, somehow Boise State got into the championship now, so they'll, they're, they're gonna play for the, the championship.
Huh.
Yeah. It's weird, cause I mean, that would be Wyoming if Wyoming would have beat Boise State.
Wow. Which they should have.
Yeah, or if they would have beat, uh, Air Force the week before.
Right.
So, but good year, eight and four, I mean, that's, that's, you know, so that's solid.
That is.
It's a solid year.
And I, yeah, I mean, you know, I talked about that, but man, I had, that BSU Wyoming game was such an eye-opener for me. It's like, this is a big deal.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I wish it, well, I wish it would have been a closer game, it would have been funner. Cause then you get to experience the.
And those photos, those were from the Wyoming game, did you, or those, yeah, I was gonna say.
Those were from, from Boise State.
Yeah, from, yeah, cool. Well, let's take a look outside our weather cam and it's got, it's that, one of those November mornings.
Yeah, I was gonna walk today and I got outside and I was like, mm. I, well, I looked at the window first, I was like, oh, it's not frozen over, I'll take the car.
Yeah. So, yeah, and then, uh, so our weather for the next couple of days is forty-one today, a high, and then, uh, forty, I mean, it's pretty, gonna be right around forty, uh, most of the rest of the week. So maybe snow on Friday. And this, this Saturday is, is the, uh, the twilight, Christmas twilight parade downtown.
Gosh, we got a lot of parades in this town.
Yeah, it's a good thing.
Parade, 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 parade for this.
Yeah, so, yeah, good stuff. All right, well, this morning we have, uh, Union County Commissioner Matt Scarfo and he's gonna be with us right after this. All right, we're back with Commissioner Matt Scarfo, how are you, man?
Good morning, how are you?
I'm good.
Good Thanksgiving?
Yeah, it was, ate way too much and, you know, just like normal. And it was night, this, this, we, uh, this particular Thanksgiving, I like, uh, and this isn't always, when we hosted at our house, you know, then there's always stuff to do. But we were at somebody else's, somebody, other's family's house and so then after the dinner, after the meal, I went and sat in a chair and watched football and fell asleep from the turkey, I mean, it was just like, yeah.
Tryptophan, huh? I always, I always tell my, hey, I got tryptophan, I gotta go take a nap.
Yeah, yeah.
Whether it was tryptophan or not.
Like, we didn't even have turkey this year, what do you mean?
Tryptophan, tryptophan.
Yeah, so it's not, it wasn't, you don't, I mean, I like those days where, you know, it's like super relaxed and you can go back and eat some more and then go take a nap and go, I mean, watch football for a while, it's just, you know.
So you must've ate early?
Yeah, we ate at noon for one, yeah, and so then the whole rest of the day was like, we just kinda grazed and slept and talked and.
We ate a little bit later this year, which it's like, okay, do I not eat lunch?
Right, yeah, that is a little weird, right, yeah.
But.
I like eating later.
Do you?
Yeah, like five, like normal dinnertime, that's when we ate and I didn't eat at all until then.
And we were talking earlier, you guys deep fried a prime rib?
Yeah, and, and a turkey.
Okay, I gotta, I gotta try this deep frying thing.
Yeah, yeah, deep fried, the skin on a deep fried turkey is like.
Well, it must be crispy.
A whole different level.
And then just juicy in the middle?
Oh, it was so good.
All right, now I'm getting kinda hungry.
It was so good.
Yeah, I always, I always tell you about this time of year is ninety percent of my mayonnaise intake just happened in the last four days.
This turkey's so dry, you have to mayonnaise it up.
It's like my leftover turkey, it, it has to go with man, I could, I could go cold, I could go hot. It's like I make a turkey sandwich with mayonnaise and then I dip it in mayonnaise, I mean, for some reason.
I don't like mayonnaise.
I don't eat mayonnaise that much throughout the year, but this time of year, literally that's why I say it's like ninety percent of my mayonnaise intake.
Yeah, see, mayo is like, you know, when you go, when you go to the doctor and you look at the things that you're supposed to get rid of because of your heart health.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, mayonnaise is right there.
It's just eggs and oil.
Yeah, and it's like, I'm sorry, I'm gonna, I'm gonna have a, a jar of mayonnaise in my casket with me, I just, yeah.
I like it.
Not literally, but it's like, yeah, I mean, it's just like, I'm, I love it, yeah.
And then we also had a spiraled ham.
Yum.
And with spiraled ham and my wife brought out the Dijon mustard, oh my gosh.
I'd much rather have ham sandwich than turkey.
I am with you on that.
Yeah, I'm not a tur, like turkey's just, mm, mm.
You should try a lot of mayonnaise on it.
I don't like that. No, you know what I put on turkey sandwich? Butter and mustard.
Butter?
Yeah, yeah, in, in, in the UK, they put butter on everything, BC.
It's a food group, huh?
Yeah, it really, like, it's just but, like, like butter on a sandwich, like my mom, I was making a peanut butter and honey sandwich and my mom's like, did you put butter on that? I was like, yeah, of course.
Butter everything.
Yeah. Makes it not dry.
Hey, on the sports, uh, the women's volleyball team, we're streaming at Benchwarmers.
Oh, you are?
Yes.
The, the, uh.
Wednesday game.
Pool play games, Wednesday and Friday?
Yeah, we bought the whole package.
Look at this guy getting himself a little free plug.
What? Oh, we're on air?
Okay, so listen, on Wednesday at eleven Pacific standard time, you guys are gonna be open?
Yep, oh yeah.
You're open specially?
No, we're open at eleven AM every, yeah, we may be open at ten-thirty so everyone can get in and get, you know.
Any specials?
The game's on.
Yeah.
That's, that's special enough, cause man, they are, they are doing it.
Yeah, they, they, they really do have a chance at winning a national championship.
So Wednesday, like tomorrow.
Quit jinxing them, just.
Oh, that, that, that.
Yeah.
This ain't baseball, volleyball's different.
So we were talking about, uh, I've bought the packages in the past, like the full package, like, oh, football's gonna do it and the, and then they're one and done. And so I was thinking about just buying each individual package, you know, cause I'm superstitious with the baseball thing.
Yeah.
I was telling my manager, I'm like, maybe we should just, like, because I don't wanna, I don't wanna buy the, the big package and then they're one and done.
Yeah.
And I was like, never mind, buy the, they're, they're going, they're going, my superstitions are gone.
I mean, you're getting at least two games for that.
I don't, I don't, it was like forty bucks and it's fine. So it's not the, it wasn't the price, it was more of the, I don't wanna jinx them.
Well, and where do you, where do you get it from, is it, who is it from, who's it streamed through?
Oh, NAI?
Like stretch, yeah, it's eight bucks or whatever a game.
Yeah.
Well, I'll probably, I might come down there and watch it then.
Yeah, come on down.
So Wednesday, like tomorrow?
Tomorrow, or yeah, tomorrow at eleven and then Friday at eleven.
Cool, all right.
No, really, yeah, that'd be, that'd be awesome.
Your place is closed. Are you gonna be there?
Uh, no. I think I, I got, I got work, man.
I got people.
Yeah.
Uh, you know what? I may be able to be there for the little, I got some work in, in the morning and some meetings in the morning.
All right.
I'll try there, I'll try to be there.
Should we just start it off with the question that the lady left yesterday?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Finally, we got some questions from the audience.
Becky Lester wants to know, uh, the feral cat problem.
Yes.
Let me read you the exact question, not, that way we don't, I'm gonna pull it up real fast. It has something, there was something added in about like the, the humane society or something, but I'll, I'll read you the exact question that she left.
And please, anybody else out there who wants to ask questions, that's, that's why I'm, that's why I'm here. Or if you can't get in now, uh, nine six three one zero zero one, or email me at mscarfo@union-county.org. Emails are tough because the cybersecurity and all that, I don't trust emails, I've said it many times in the show. I'd rather you call me or come visit me in person. I'm, I do not wanna be the, the person that hits the wrong button and the county is under a ten million dollar, hey, pay us or we're not giving you the computer back.
And steal everybody's information.
Oh, man, the email stuff is horrible.
All right, Becky Lester wants to know, says, how about you ask Matt about the feral cat problem and how the shelter is addressing the issue?
Yes, well, it's an ongoing problem, we've been, we've had this issue for you, for a long time and COVID didn't help at all. Cause having the shelters down, not too many people were able to go neuter or spay or neuter their, uh, their pets. And it was, it was an issue prior, but COVID really pushed it over. Right now, we are looking into the TNR program, the trap neuter and release program. And Baker's done it, but Baker, I don't quote me, I think it's like tens of thousands of dollars a year. So it, it, the short answer is it's boiling down to funding. To trap, neuter and release feral cats is just very, very expensive.
Yeah, you gotta pay somebody to do it, right?
Yeah, it's like, uh, I think it boils down to, it's like two hundred and fifty dollars per cat.
Wow.
And shoot, I know a place that has thirty-nine cats right now.
In town?
In town, oh yeah, in town.
Wait, okay, so give me a rough estimate about how many do we have roughly?
Oh, shoot.
If you had to guess.
Thousands.
Thousands in this little town?
No, in Union County.
Oh, in the county?
Yeah, yes, thousands.
Still a lot.
No, it's a, yeah, trust me, it's an issue, uh, and we're continually trying to work on it, but I would just recommend everybody, if you have cats or pets, please spay and neuter them.
Right, because even, even if you had the funding to do that, even if we had the funding to do it, it takes a long time for that to really take effect.
Oh yeah, because we, we release them.
Yeah.
And so they're still there.
Right.
And then their life expectancy is not as long as one that would be like housed, like would be a pet.
Right.
So it'd still be, okay, we trap, we neuter, we release, the problem's still gonna be here for a decade.
Right.
Until we'll start seeing the effects. The thing is, I would like to see is stop the reproduction now. So in ten years, we start seeing a decline.
So in the county, where are the pockets, what cities or what towns are, is it everywhere?
It's everywhere, yeah. Yeah, and it's just not, it's just not here in Union County, there's, there's issues.
But I mean, like, I didn't, I mean, there might be, I haven't seen a population of feral cats out in Island City where I'm at. You know, is there other areas of LaGrande that has feral cats, you know, that are more than others or does it just?
No, we, and I work with Deputy Kelly, the Animal Resource Officer at the Sheriff's Department. And yeah, we know the locations, we know where, where the hotspots are and we get the phone calls and.
Yeah.
And like with the animal shelter, we just need some more funding for the animal shelter.
Yeah.
Uh, they're, you know, even trying to keep, the animal shelter does not take cats, cats in. It's just if, if we took cats in, we'd be bankrupt in months.
Right.
Yeah, it's just they're, uh, and I was, and I'm learning more and more, that's why I wanted to be a county commissioner, learn more and more about feral cats. And.
Thank you for doing that.
Yeah, I'm finding out that, you know, it's not seasonal, like deer and elk or, you know, it's like, okay, you got the breeding season, they breed once a year, I guess a feral cat will breed, have a litter and then breed right after that litter. And so they could just continually.
So I wonder how many, how many cats, how many kittens could a mom produce in one year? Yeah, that would be interesting.
Are you looking it up?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Say, let's let Donzy look it up.
Yeah, I mean, I guess I don't, I mean, part of it is, is, yeah, I mean, it's, it's easy to recognize the problem, but this seems like a very difficult thing to get, to solve.
They can produce a litter three times a year.
I was gonna say three and then I don't know how many, what, anywhere from three to twelve?
A bunch, yeah.
So, yeah, we're looking at, I don't know, from thirty to, yeah.
A lot.
Yeah.
What, what are, what are, what are other towns doing about it?
There's not, like I said, Baker, but they, they're getting some funding somehow. A lot of, a lot of the animal shelters are ran off of endowments.
Right.
And there is no, yeah, there's no state, federal funding that goes into every animal shelters. That's one thing legislatively I'd like to bring up, just, I mean, even if we had an extra ten grand a year and we just solely put it on the trap and neuter program, that would, that would help. But, uh, to get that even ten grand a year is very, very difficult.
Yeah, but ten grand a year would only do forty cats.
True, yeah, but it's better than doing, not those forty cats.
Yeah, that's true, I mean, I guess if you look at it in terms of babies, like, that's a lot of babies being stopped from being made.
Yeah.
What, what, like historically, what do, what do, like, is the, does it come to euthanization eventually? Or is that like completely inhumane?
There is, cause it, being at Naco and I've talked to other commissioners across the, the nation about this, some have used poison in the past and I'm not, I'm, I'm not going, I'm not going that route. I don't wanna have dead cats laying all over the place.
Yeah, yeah, non-who.
No, uh, so, yeah, I don't think there is a, so I was getting, my other point was, uh, we get rid of the, the cats, you know, I always look at the ecosystem, it's like, do the mice, do the mice come in?
Right.
Cause what are the feral cats eating? They're, they're eating something.
Yeah.
And so I always look down the road on, all right, well, may, okay, which, which one do you want? Feral cats or you want a bunch of mice? I don't, and I don't know if we got rid of the feral cats, if the mice would, population would increase. I do not know that, but it's just the way my brain works and I'm like, okay.
Right.
We fixed this problem, are we going to create another problem by fixing that problem?
Right.
I don't know.
But on a, out in the valley, a farm or ranch, they don't, I mean, they have the ability to control their feral cat population.
Yeah, it's called twenty-two.
Right, yeah, lead poisoning. Right, yeah, lead poisoning.
Well, the thing is, most of them encourage it because they don't want the mice in their fields and in their barns.
Right, 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 yeah.
They encourage owls and they encourage all that, so, because they're, you know, cows will break their ankles on rodent holes and.
Right, well, and, and coyotes will feed on feral cats, I'm sure, yeah, you know, so there, there's, they, it.
But there's no ecosystem like that in town.
Right, right, yeah.
The issue we are having, which I'm not promoting, hey, take your feral cats out and, and the farms because they're, yeah, don't do that, because there are some farmers that, hey, I, I handle my own, I don't need a litter of, new litter of kittens.
Right.
Every week coming out here.
Right.
So.
No, and it's just, yeah, and you know, I mean, people will, I, and I would, I mean, I can't, they will dump a litter of kittens on the side of a road somewhere or whatever the case might be.
Or in a garbage can. I've seen like videos on TikTok where they put them in a plastic bag and just throw them in the garbage can.
That's what I'm saying, just spay and, you know, get them spayed or neutered.
Yeah.
And we won't have that, that'll help, so.
Yeah, what a prob, what a interesting problem.
Price is Right, who was Bob Barker? Every, last thing he said.
That was his thing, right?
For, shoot, how long was he on Price is Right?
Right.
A hundred years?
Hundred, I was gonna say at least three decades.
Yeah.
And that was the one thing he said at the end of every show was, please spay and neuter your pets.
Right.
So it's just not a, if, hey, if Bob Barker was saying it for 30 years, starting in the seventies.
Paid to say that.
Yes, but it's been an issue.
Yeah, for sure.
So, uh, for, uh, Ms. Lester's question is, yeah, funding and we're still working on it and we're trying to, to get this problem. Uh, animal shelter is, the volunteers and everybody we have out there is doing fantastic. Just trying to keep up, like I said, uh, funding, uh, love to get an endowment, like these other animal shelters, I'd love to get some stable funding from the, from the state too. But they do not, uh, the state does not recognize feral cats as, you know, fishing game, uh, the Health and Human Service, they don't, it's like, nobody's, no one's taking the, uh, uh, what was the word they used? What's the term? Um, uh, no one's in charge of feral cats, it's our own problem.
Oh, interesting.
Yeah, even on state level.
Well.
Like even raccoons have more of a, uh, status than feral cats do.
As far as a problem.
Yeah.
Or if like, yeah, if there's a problem with raccoons, there's somebody to call.
Yes.
At the state level, but not.
The county level too, yeah.
Yeah.
Come and, we have a trapper and we got, he'll come and get it. But a feral cat? Nope, nobody's problem. So, I don't know.
Yeah. So, well, what else is going on in the commissioner world?
Commissioner world, yes. Well, we just got done with the regular session in the spring, which was hot and heavy, you know, it's like six months of back and forth to Salem. Uh, summertime was pretty quiet because usually it is after, you know, working with legislation and going to Salem and, uh, and then we actually started ramping up this short session coming up. Short sessions, like really, it's short, uh, February, March. And talking with a lot of the legislators, they are, they're gonna try to make it short and sweet. They said that nothing controversial will be brought to the table, uh, they don't want anybody walking out anymore. They said it's just gonna be
Business.
Just business.
Yeah.
No extended policy, you know, stuff that's gonna get.
Yeah.
Both sides of Iowa riled up, uh, but with that, I'm still trying to work on getting the fairgrounds funding.
Right.
Which I was asking for a million dollars, as you remember.
Yeah.
In March.
Right.
Well, now, the, with inflation and the cost of goods sold and all that, then our lovely inflation, I'm asking for 2.25 million now.
Wow.
To get this project done.
Double?
When I first started five years ago, the whole project was $700,000.
Oh my gosh.
Five years ago.
Yeah.
And now the project is 4.1 million. I keep saying, please, I go.
Let's just do it.
I can't, and that's, it's 2.25 as of today.
Yeah.
And so I don't know. I'm gonna have to revisit it when I, uh, go to ask for it in, in February, but I'm very optimistic. I don't know if there's one legislator out there that has not heard of this project. And, and the issues we had, we just went to the AOC Annual Conference in Eugene, uh, two weeks ago. And there was a fairgrounds meeting we had and Union County was brought up half a dozen times. From, uh, Multnomah County to Jefferson County, I mean, so all, all the fellow county commissioners that are in charge, I'm sorry, liaisons to their fair and their fairgrounds, they know that we don't have working bathrooms and they're all willing to do whatever they can to, to get this project completed.
Good.
Because, you know, the fairgrounds, it's just, it's fair for a week.
Right.
And a lot of legislators, it's like, this is, this is not just fairs, it's not just cows and chickens and goats and, you know, you know, waffle cones and, and corn dogs, this is, we use it for emergencies, we use it for more than emergencies, it's, it's.
Right.
If something, a fire came over the hill in this part of town, we're using that.
Right.
And not to have working toilets or running water out there.
Yeah.
Because the, the water, our wells are failing, there is water, but it has nowhere to go.
Right.
So every time we fill the, you know, we use the water in the sink, it just seeps up from the ground.
Wow.
It's not, it's not, it's not good.
No, and that's like where everybody will go if there's a zombie apocalypse, it's like the emergency.
Oh, I thought they'd all go to Morgan Lake.
That might be a good idea. You get the high ground?
Yeah.
Go where, where did you say?
Morgan Lake.
Morgan Lake, yeah.
That's where we're going to find us.
Yeah.
Yeah, so that's, yeah, the fairgrounds project's still number one. Representative Levy is taking it on as her number one, uh, project for this, uh, short session. So that's fantastic to have one of the legislators actually put that as their priority to get it through.
Yeah.
I just really need to work, yeah, I may be going to Salem quite a bit during that short session and just, I just need someone to say, let's shut Commissioner Scarfo up and give him this, this funding.
You're just gonna squeak enough that it's gonna get through.
That's the, that's the name of the game. And so literally, it's, it's taken five years to, and pounding on enough doors over there and talking to people and to have everybody, like, I could walk down the, the halls of the Capitol now and, you know.
Oh, oh.
Yeah.
You're the bathroom guy from Union County.
I was with Senator Hansel and I was going to Rip Levy's office with him and Senator Frederick was there and he's like, oh, hey, Matt, had a great time at the, you know, Eastern Oregon, uh, Economic Development Session here in La Grande, he's telling me all about it and I was like, he's like, what are you doing over here? It was legislative days, a month or so ago, and I said, my wastewater project, the fairgrounds, and he's like, how has this not been funded yet? You know, it's just, it's like, well, it's like, exactly, I'm like, gave him, you know, the information on it, called me with any questions.
Yeah.
And so there, there is momentum at the Capitol and the word is out, so hopefully, usually the short session is not, uh, where you look for funding, it's usually in the, during the regular sessions. So fingers crossed that they'll maybe say, all right, let's just tweak this, tweak that, and let's give Union County the funding to finish up the bathrooms.
Good. So if they said, if they said in this session, okay, you have the money, then when, when would the project, when, how long is it gonna take to actually do the project?
Uh, we're, we're actually getting the first part of the project started, I think, the spring.
Okay.
Uh, that is just to get the lines across 84 and the Grand Ron River with the pump stations in.
Okay.
Just, we don't have any funding after that.
Okay.
But that's the most important part, right? Getting it across the river and.
Yes, but then again, we still don't have.
Right.
We still have bathrooms at the fairgrounds, so every part is, uh, the project getting finished is.
Now, there was some, when they redid the guardrails, there was some push to do something during that, were they able to?
Yes, I don't know if that, because when they were doing the construction, uh, the county, uh, gave $250,000 to the upper funds just to get the, while they were working on it, get the, the piping across, I do not know if that was
Okay.
Done or not.
Okay.
But, uh, yeah, they were, they were working, they were trying to.
Right, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, well, cool.
So that's, yeah, I've been still working on that, but.
And what are, where does that, I mean, does the state have a pool of money for these types of things? I mean, and where does that money come from? How does?
Yeah, so there is ways and means and they are kind of in charge of like the general fund.
Okay.
And for projects and, and the like. And so it comes from our state taxpayer dollars.
And so then, so then counties bring projects or whomever brings projects and says, hey, we really need some help from the state on this particular project. And.
Correct, yeah, every, every county commissioner has, trust me, a good, what projects you're working on and.
Right. And they're, and like the fair, are they these kinds of projects? Are they, you know, fairgrounds or?
Some of them are, yeah, it's all walks of.
Parks or?
Yeah, there's, there's parks, there's, uh, you know, drought money, uh, farmer relief, I mean, there's, boy, you name it from.
There's little different buckets. And, okay.
Correct, and then, and so when you go to the Capitol, they'll say, well, hey, so and so is in charge of transportation, you may want to get in front of that senator.
Like if you got a bridge.
Yes, yes, so, you know, the game and go, you know, you know, go, go see Representative Lively or, I mean, so everybody, it's just like we are in the county, we're all, we have our different liaisons.
Right.
It's like, hey, you got feral cat problems, oh, Commissioner Scarfo.
Right.
Go see him. And well, in the other two commissioners, Commissioner, uh, Anderson, Commissioner Beverage, they'll bring, you know, they'll get an email from one of the constituents that are really close with them, and they're like, well, you know, go talk to Commissioner Scarfo or we'll do vice versa.
Yeah.
And we, we all, uh, know each other's liaisons and we always try to keep everybody kind of like, hey, uh, we'll get email to all three of us and, and we'll, hey, I got it, don't worry.
Yeah.
And it was like, okay, thanks and.
Yeah. So, yeah, so we, you need to, we need to have a T-shirt for you that says, the Cat Man, like, rather than the Cat Lady.
Volunteer for that?
The Cat, what?
Did you volunteer for the?
I was elected for that.
Well, no, I know, but.
But how did you get assigned?
You were like, I'm on the cats.
Yeah. Uh, so when, uh, when I came on, we, so we had a.
Low man on the total ball, they're like, you're the cat.
Commissioner Beverage had seniority. And so in my opinion, I'm like, hey, you know, I'm not taking anything from you, and so she, you know, say, hey, what do you want? And she said, all right, I'll keep all what I have and, you know, I don't want these. And then Commissioner, Commissioner Beverage was, is fantastic in the natural resources world and, and agriculture and stuff, so of course, we, you know, me personally, I wanted him to have all that because of all of his connections and how great he is in, in that realm. And then I took everything else.
Cats.
Cats and bathrooms.
It's just not cats. It's just not cats, but, uh, no, it's a, it's a list of stuff. It's, yeah, it's so, like, I'm a liaison to the behavioral health.
Right.
I don't, and mental health, I, that's not, but I'm, I'm learning.
Right, that's why COVID landed in your lap.
Yeah, that was, that was fun, yeah, Carrie Brighidi.
Yeah.
And me, I, I always tell the story that when I first met her, like, wow, you, you know, we probably will never talk.
Right.
Because you're, you know, just STD world and, you know, that other, you know, stuff, I'm like, okay, and then COVID hit. And I'll, I talked to her dang near every day during COVID. What's the numbers? Where are we at? Can I, can we open? Can we close? What's, you know, oh, when's the vaccine sites? When's testing? So, I mean, her and I were two years, two and a half years of just solid contact.
Yeah, it's so funny because I, you know, I mean, I saw her on Zoom every other week for weeks and weeks and weeks, you know? And, and, yeah, when I saw her in the store, I saw her in D and B, she's like, said, hey, it was like, you are way shorter than what I ever, I, yeah. I mean, yeah, anyhow, it was just funny.
I get that all the time too.
Yeah.
But it was like.
That was the hardest part for me too, for like sports.
Yeah.
For a long time, I, I, I was doing everything remote.
Yeah.
And I would like have these athletes on and interview them, and then, like, the, the hardest thing was like, do you reintroduce yourself? When you're like, when you meet them face to, yeah, like, it was the most awkward, weirdest thing, because I'd like see them and be like, should I like say hi or, you know what I mean? Like, I didn't know what to do and I ne, I never really figured it out.
Yeah, you know, it's funny, there was, there was a person that I interviewed and I met them in person and I said, hey, yeah, good to meet you in person, and they're like, you met me in person before. We were like, I mean, they wanted to have an argument about whether, is like, no, we were in remote, but I'm not gonna argue with you about it, it doesn't matter, yeah.
No, there is that, I mean, after COVID, there was that, is that, is that the, yeah.
Yeah.
You know?
Yeah.
So now you weren't the, yeah, trust me.
Awkward, awkward, super awkward.
No, but I remember after COVID, I was just, you know, I'm shaking hands, you know, things, yeah, let's, here we go, we're back. As I am, you know, I'm, you know, it was, my dad raised me as, you know, look somebody in the eye, you shake their hand and you're, and when I couldn't do that, I'm like, this is.
That's the weirdest thing about kids nowadays, they have serious like connection, like issues.
Yeah, COVID, and COVID didn't help at all.
No, no.
No, I put, it put everybody back.
You throw COVID on top of these and phones and kids just.
Don't you want to start thinking about how the, because the issues we're seeing here now and it's not, that was, that was horrible. Something else, get, give me another question.
What else is going on? What's going on, else is going on in the commissioner world?
Uh, to, 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 yeah, fairgrounds, they, well, on a state level, uh, there was an article about, uh, ballot measure 114, the Harney County judge down there declared that, uh, unconstitutional, so that's probably gonna go move forward, that's the gun bill that was passed. That's been heavy news.
So, so what, explain that more to us.
So that was, that, that was on the ballot.
Right, right, I know, I remember what.
Uh, Sheriff Bowen went over and testified on that as well.
Right.
And it's about the Second Amendment rights.
Right, and they're saying that it's unconstitutional, but I.
The ballot measure was.
Okay, but I thought that there was a, there was movement recently where uh, the FBI said that they would give a, an extension. I, I mean, it seemed like there were, on the other front, for those people that are wanting that bill to proceed, that there was some room, I don't know, I don't know, I'm, I'm confused about where that's at.
Yeah, it's, when it starts getting up into the different, you know, party in the Supreme Court and.
Right.
It's, it's, I really wish they would vet a lot of these ballot measures before they put them on.
Oh, man.
And, and find out if it's unconstitutional prior to us voting.
Right.
And, you know, it seems like every single, I mean, even measure 110, worst ballot measure ever, I'll just say ever.
Yeah.
But I, on the planet.
Right, and I'm.
Ah, we can't be on the planet, I don't know, there's probably some worse ones, you know, some.
Yeah, I mean, we've known about, we've, we've known about the detrimental effect of 110 for a couple of years, you know.
I knew it before it was even voted on.
Right, but it's finally, finally now there is a wave of, wow, I mean, people are looking at it and, you know, even the Portland news folks are.
Well, it's bipartisan now.
Right, yeah.
Yeah, it's just, it was such a bad idea. Yeah, it's just it was such a bad idea.
But it's so funny to me is that even even though you have all of these statistics of how bad it is, you still have people going, well, we could alter it or well, we could. I mean, they they soft pedal.
It was voted on as a treatment bill and the state of Oregon has the worst treatment in the nation.
Right.
So what did we just pass?
Right. But it's not. It's not unlike the legalization of marijuana and the where they where it was just passed and there was no structure to manage. Okay, so how is it going to be distributed? Where is it going to be? I mean, the initiative came through and then the state catches up. The difference is is marijuana is not lethal, you know, and the the side effects of 110 have been very lethal.
Very.
Yeah.
Yeah, I've noticed and I've said this on your show many times that our state has ran with the cart in front of the horse.
Yeah.
Pretty much all the time.
Yeah.
Well, let's get it passed now and then we'll work on the
Right.
The the issues down the road. It's like, no, work on the issues first, then pass it.
Yeah, let me let me ask you a question. So Portland recently, and I don't know if it was their county, I think it was the county, that passed a passed a law or passed an ordinance. I don't know what what do you call them at the county level? The where the you can't do drugs in public. And and it gave and it gave the law enforcement something to work with the problems that they're having with people literally doing drugs in.
So the city of Portland did this.
Correct. Is that? Yeah, the city did. All right.
Okay, the city did. Yeah, that's. I need to look. I did not. I was not aware of that. When did that happen?
When did that? I mean, it just 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 recently. Yeah.
Shoot, I better get.
But I guess the the question is, is I wonder if there are there things that we can do? I mean, I haven't I haven't I haven't experienced seeing people in our area doing drugs or shooting up in public. But I mean, I guess.
No, but I would like I need to look into that. When I get back to the office, I'm going to look that up because that would at least give our law enforcement some teeth.
Right, if we, yeah.
Because that's what they they took away all their teeth.
Right.
They're like, well, look, crime is now. I'm like, well, we can't. Our law enforcement isn't. It can't arrest anybody.
Right.
Because nothing is legal anymore.
Right.
Or I'm sorry, something is illegal anymore.
Right.
So that no, I need that would be, yeah, I need to go talk to the chief and the sheriff and see if the city of Portland did that.
Right.
I want to see the the wording on it. If they're actually saying, hey, we're just going to give you a warning or if they're actually, hey, you're doing it in public. Now we're going to put you in jail.
Right.
I need to look that up.
Well, yeah. And I mean, I think they're come. I mean, they have a big problem with pockets of people just shooting up.
Oh, yeah, sure. Portland.
Right. I mean, along with everything else compiled, you know, so anyhow.
I think with 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 measures, especially around guns, historically, we have we have this issue where we give a little, right? We give a little like, you know, with say concealed carry, you have to have a permit for concealed carry. Constitutionally, you shouldn't have to have a permit to have a gun on you, whether you're hiding it or not.
Right.
But we gave a little. We gave a little. And then that just keeps that that keeps these these. It just keeps it rolling. You know what I mean? Like if we wouldn't have gave a little in the first place, I don't think we would have the issues that we have today. You know what I mean? Like there's there's issues around guns like this this measure 110 or whatever it was. Was it 114?
114.
114 is like you need a permit to buy and sell a gun. Well, you already pretty much have to have a permit. You have to go through a state background check. You know what I mean? So like, why do we keep giving a it's a little bit of space for it? It just opens the door up for another one. I mean, honestly, it'll just keep coming.
Well, and I mean, I and it, I mean, the measure 114 passed by 54%, just barely passed. And but huge impact on everyone. Yeah. So I don't. Yeah, I mean, the initiative system is flawed in some way and it's and I'm, yeah, so I it is what it is.
I just our ballots are getting flooded with.
Right.
And the way everything's written is horrible.
Well, and somebody told me.
It's like deceiving.
Well, somebody told me like, yeah, the initiatives are written a lot of times by lobbyists and there's a ton of money behind them and there's outside influences that are pushing those initiatives. Yeah, yeah. So it's not. It's not genuine. It's not organic. It's not organ driven. It's driven by something else. So.
Yeah. And so we, you know, we got bouts coming out again in November and there's some others, some stuff that's going to be on it. That's not looking forward to. But hey, I read a nice article in the paper about you.
You did.
Yeah, exciting.
So, yeah, we we haven't. We're not talking about it here on the air much just because I'm trying to. Yeah.
Yeah, I don't know how the rules would be on that.
Yeah, I am running for county commissioner. Yeah. I am running for county commissioner, but I'm trying to keep me talking about that kind of separated from the TV station so that.
Yeah.
Yeah, but no, thank you. And and it's kind of funny because that, I mean, a lot of the questions. I mean, I've learned a lot from having you guys each on, you know, every month on the show and and have become good friends with you guys. And so who knows? We'll have to see where it goes, how it works out.
Exactly. But yeah, the legislature going on, you know, it started. It's like, well, it's next year, isn't it?
Right.
Oh, boy. It's trust me, it's already started legislative races and, you know, I mean.
Yeah.
It's on the TV, it's on the news.
Yeah.
And so you know, it's it's good that there's a short session, but because there's there's, I would say 30% of elected officials or more are out trying to, you know, campaigning. So when you're campaigning, that's one thing. It's it's very difficult to campaign and do your job at the same time. I don't know how some of our congressmen do it. You know, they get they get the two year terms. One year you're working, next year they're campaigning. One year they're working, next year they're campaigning. It's like, boy, it's rough.
Yeah.
So.
Well, hey, good to have you with us this morning, man. I think we're having a little bit of an issue, but did we get it resolved, Benny? So I tell you what, let's let's take a quick commercial and we'll be right back.
What happened?
Eastern Oregon is full of interesting people.
What's what's it doing, Benny?
Interesting things to say. Here at EO Live, we're committed to connecting you to these intriguing people with EO Talks. We let our special guests share their ideas and life experiences with deep, open, engaging and inquisitive conversations. You'll also be informed in depth on some of the most recent and relevant events, issues and more. EO Talks on EO Live, your connection to Eastern Oregon, now on Roku.
Okay, we got the. All right, we're back with Matt Scarfo. Glad you're here with us. Thanks, man.
Yep, you bet. We good? There's.
I don't know. Do we still have an echo or did we get rid of it, Benny? Okay, so I think we're good.
Oh, okay. They're trying to shut me down again.
Probably that that locator chip that's.
That's right.
Getting us feedback. They're keeping an eye on.
Brother Scarfo, he's saying the truth. Ah, we gotta shut that.
He took the Elon Musk chip.
I have one of those?
Yeah. What is he? He's offering to like pay people money, like 200,000, I think.
Oh, I saw that.
To be a test. To be a tester of that.
Of the chip?
Transmitter, yeah.
Well, you know, they started doing the the chip in the hand.
I didn't know that.
Oh, look it up. So it's they put it right here in your hand and it's like your credit card and you go pay for stuff and with your.
Yeah, no, it's funny because that's like.
Something about that, I think.
That's like the, yeah, the mark of the beast. That's it's been, yes, for a long time. That's been like, oh, it's going to be a chip of some kind.
It is. Well, I mean, look.
Right, yeah.
Well, they were trying to with the gas tax with all the electric vehicles on the roads, they're not paying gas tax because the gas tax goes back into the roads. So they were suggesting that they chip our vehicles and they go off of mileage on how much you use it and that's how you'll be taxed. Well, you know, that's an invasion of privacy and some people look at that. I mean, do you want someone knowing where you're going at all times?
No, right.
But they already know where you're going at all times. You carry a cell phone.
I know. That's what I mean, man, they.
They they know what you're thinking.
Everybody says, oh, my cell phone's not listening. I'm like, oh, yeah, just got to say, hey, Siri.
Yeah, you don't even have to say, hey, Siri.
My phone's listening.
Right, but the I guess there's two. I mean, because there was the state of Oregon came out with a report recently that said they're going to reduce highway services in our area
Yes.
because of a loss of revenue because of electric cars. So.
And we don't even have hardly any electric cars.
Well, right.
We probably have less than than Metro does, yes.
Yeah, right, right. And so so, yeah, that's where this conversation, that's where this conversation came up from. But, you know, 18 wheelers, they already pay by the mile. They pay. I mean, that's why.
That's why they have to keep logs.
They keep a log and that's why the the price of diesel that they go get is less per gallon because they're paying that tax on top of it.
Sometimes it's more.
Yeah. So anyhow, I mean, we're already there in some manner.
Yeah. So they're on the West Side, too. They're looking at doing more tolls, more tolling.
Right.
And.
For like the bridges?
Yep. And which is a big concern over there on that side, you know, someone was doing the math that some families, it's like $30 a day. They want to go to work and back and tolling.
That's a lot.
Oh, it's a it's a ton.
On top of gas and time.
Yeah. And so the traffic's already horrible over there. How are you going to? I mean, you can't put a toll booth up. You can't have people dumping in coins. So they're they said, well, we'll just chip the car. And when you go pass a sensor, we'll tack it to your.
Well, and that's how it is right now. I mean, in the big cities.
Oh, they actually they already have it.
Yeah, it's a it's a it's a tag. I mean, they stick it in their windshield and when they go through a toll, it.
It reads it?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, I mean, it's, yeah, some kind of a I don't I don't know that it's a location chip. I don't know. I don't know that it's based upon they can track where it is, but they have some kind of RFD. What are they? One of those tags, some kind of a tag that it scans, it reads it through it. Yeah. I don't know if it's wireless.
I I've never really lived in a state that has tolls before. I remember we're in Florida driving from going to the airport.
Yeah.
And next thing you know, I got everybody and they still had toll booths.
Yeah.
Everybody's reaching into their purses and trying to find change and things and like, oh, the people just walk around with like rolls of quarters in their.
Yeah, most, yeah, most tolls these days, they don't even, I mean, when I've traveled like to Seattle or Dallas or wherever, they don't, I mean, there are no toll booths. If you go through a toll area and you don't have a toll car, you haven't paid for it, they just scan your license plate and send you a ticket. They say, yeah. So which is funny because a couple of years ago, we sold a vehicle and left the plates on it because in Oregon, the plates stay. Well, that vehicle actually was taken and cleared to California and we started getting toll fees.
Oh, my God.
Yeah.
So they didn't change the title.
Yeah, even though we changed the title. Yeah. Well, I mean, we'd sign the title over to them.
They didn't change.
And they didn't change the title.
Could you imagine that person's job that, I mean, cars get spot and sold daily?
Right.
There's probably like a building full of other people saying they're going like, you know, you're probably on a stack of papers waiting to get done.
Oh, and it was it was it was a mess getting untangled. I mean, there was there were a couple of hundred bucks for the tolls and we had to, you know, of course, you couldn't get a hold of the toll company. It was like a private toll company that was managing stuff in San Francisco. And so you'd have to write them and, you know, email them and like this is the thing and this is the other. I mean, it it took it took two or three months to untangle.
That that brings up a pretty funny story. So when I moved up here from Arizona.
Yeah.
I kept getting mail down in Arizona.
Yeah.
Well, you know, three or four years went by and my dad's like, hey, you got you got something from the sheriff's department down here. I was like, oh, what the heck? I go, that was like 10 years ago. And I said, well, it's like, what? They said, well, yeah, you need to show up or, you know, if you get pulled over, you're going to get arrested. And I was like, what the heck? Well, my dad would keep getting the mail and it'd be like jury duty.
Right, oh.
And he would just.
Toss it.
He would just toss it. I go, Dad, I come to visit you once in a while, you know.
Yeah, like hold on to that.
Yeah, if I get a speeding ticket or something, I'm going to be in jail for not doing my duty to go to jury. Because I don't know, I didn't think it was that big of a deal. And it ended up being, you know, I had to make a phone call. I had to show proof of where I was living and they got rid of it. But that was a, you know, you don't.
It was a mess.
You just throw away those jury duty things. They were going to come get me. I was like, thanks, Dad.
Yeah, now you're on the other side of that. It's like, yeah, when you get a jury duty thing, you got to pay attention to that.
Yes.
From Union County.
Exactly.
Yeah.
I got so I got jury duty one time, but they they let me. I didn't have to. I mean, I went through a couple of interviews and then they were like, okay, you're dismissed.
Yeah, when I was ten in bar, I would I'd get them and I'd be like, uh, yep, know them, know them, know them. I never was ever on jury just because.
In a small town like this, it's got to be impossible to find.
Oh, yeah, it's very.
A jury, you know what I mean? Like it. I wouldn't want to sit on a jury. I know it's our duty, but man, like on like a big, you know, case, like impactful. I don't.
Well, it was.
I don't want that.
I think it's paid now. I'm not too sure. I think they actually give you some kind of, it used to be just like.
I don't even care about the money. I'm talking about just like the 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 pressure, man, like the.
Like you get on the oh, shoot, I can't remember the cases that are like a year and a half long.
Yeah.
It's like, yeah, what the heck?
And you're possibly putting somebody in jail for the rest of their life. You know, like, look at how many people get incarcerated, you know, that are innocent, too.
Did you see that? Did you see that series on Prime about the juror called the juror? Have you seen that? Super interesting. They so they have they have an entire case and there's one juror that is a real person. Everybody else is an actor. Yeah. And 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 so there's one guy who, I mean, and it's it's really well done. I mean, and so it's kind of like a version.
So it's kind of like a reality TV?
Yeah, it's a reality TV thing, but the one juror does not know that it's a reality TV thing until they get to the very end.
That messing with some guy.
Well, I mean, at the very end, they're like, yeah, here's $100,000. I mean, they give him $100,000 upfront at the very end for being a good sport, you know.
But at the same time, those shows are like, next time I go on a jury, I'll be like, all right.
No, you have.
You guys a bunch of actors or?
No, you should. You should check it out. It's it's very entertaining. So.
I'll put it on a list. I don't get to watch TV too often.
Yeah.
I mean, you just got to sit down and be like, I hate everybody equally. It's that simple.
Well, what's funny is is they they have they end up electing this guy to be the jury foreman. And so then he's kind of wrangling everybody in this particular and it's a civil case. And so it's anyhow, it was just, it was interesting. So, well, hey, you want to get us out of here?
Let's do it.
Yeah.
On this day, 1520, Portuguese navigator Ferdinand Magellan begins crossing the Pacific Ocean.
1520.
And then we jump all the way ahead to 1895, the very first auto race in America, organized by the Chicago Times Herald, Chicago to Evanston and back, six cars, 55 miles. Frank Dury wins averaging seven miles per hour. Can't you walk seven miles an hour dang near? I know Usain Bolt runs 27 miles.
Can run eight miles an hour. You know, I mean, you can.
Usain Bolt runs 27 miles.
I know, it's crazy, yeah.
Walking about seven miles. Can you walk seven miles an hour?
No, it's more like 13.
13?
Yeah. No, because seven minute mile is pretty. That's good.
Yeah, that's true.
Yeah.
That's true. 1994 convicted serial killer Jeffrey Dahmer is beat to death by a fellow inmate in Columbia Correctional Institution in Portage, Wisconsin. I only thought that was interesting because there's been like a lot of documentaries about Jeffrey Dahmer.
Yeah.
You know, like you see somebody with those kind of glasses and you're like, oh, look, there's a Dahmer, you know? Well, it's the it's the what are they? Aviator shades?
Yeah, I don't know.
Glasses.
But I mean, there was there was a series on that and I got I got partway into that.
I couldn't watch it. I watched one episode with my mom and I was like, no. 1997, on this day, the final episode of Beavis and Butthead on MTV. That show was so awesome. Loved it. It was so good. All right, 2022, Marion Webster's word of the year is gaslighting. While Collins is perma crisis, gaslighting is to manipulate someone using psychological methods into questioning their own sanity or powers of reasoning. And a perma crisis is an extended period of instability and insecurity, especially one resulting from a series of catastrophic events. So once a year, they release the word of the year for the dictionary and they do it on this day.
I've never heard perma crisis before.
I neither, but I've heard gaslighting before.
Yeah.
Number one song in America on this day in 1973, Carpenter's On Top of the World. And then the quote of the day comes from Dolly Wama, just one small positive thought in the morning can change your whole day. Just one small positive thought in the morning can change your whole day. That's why I like to start the day with my mom preaches it, attitude of gratitude, the three things that you're grateful for. And it just makes, you know, if you wake up before your feet hit the ground, talk about what you're grateful for. It's hard to have a bad day, really.
Yep.
That's it.
All right. Hey, thanks, Matt, for being here.